I thought you would be re- being recorded for that.
Okay, alright, very good.
If I were to talk on the other side of the room without that, my mouth would be...
Right, alright, got you Barrett. We're good. I got the thumbs up to get started. It's four o'clock. Good afternoon, everybody, on this boiling hot Maine coastal day. My name is Nate Gray. I work for the Maine Department of Marine Resources. I work on fisheries restoration. Most of my focus has been on the Kennebec and Sebastopol rivers, but I work pretty much all over the state. What I'm gonna show you is basically a program I put together for our own internal science group where we had a new director coming in and I was instructed to bring him up to speed on what we do and I got thrown the river herring bone to explain to him, you know, why these fish are important. And so I asked the usual questions, you know, how long do I got? I mean, river herring is a pretty complex subject. And he said, "You got five minutes." Okay. So this is the five-minute presentation. You're gonna get the non-abridged extended version of river herring. And when we talk about this, try not to think of it as just one species or two species. We're talking about multiple species here and we're talking about restoration. The focus here in Camden is the folks here in town are looking at the McGunta Cook River, which has been basically plugged solid with one form of dam or another for the past 200-plus years. You ready? Okay, river herring ecology. These two maps that you see are basically what we have for the range of these two particular species. Alewife are on the left in the kind of pleasing pink shade. Blueback herring are on the right in the blue shade. What the map doesn't show you is both these species continue well up into the Maritimes of Canada. But these show you the general range in these here United States. And of course Maine is squarely right in the middle of that if we were to extend it up into the Canadian Maritimes. These fish are anadromous. Does everybody know what anadromous means?
No.
Okay, and we're gonna cover anatomy here real quick. When you think of salmon, you kinda intrinsically know that they swim in from the ocean and spawn in freshwater. These are, river herring are the same thing. It's obligatory. They have to spawn in freshwater. They can't spawn in saltwater. It's a strategy that developed over several hundred thousand years where they were utilizing this freshwater habitat to grow into bigger juveniles quicker. They've been in the state of Maine for tens of thousands of years. Does that kinda cover anatomy? Everybody get that?
Yeah.
Okay, we have about 11 anadromous species in the state. Stripe bass are anadromous, salmon, the sturgeons are anadromous, okay, smelt are anadromous, multiple species of anatomy. Okay, what's interesting about this slide is this shows where they are, the ranges of both. The alewife don't go quite as far down south as the blueback herring do. You guys all know what alewives and bluebacks are. You know, I can back up and show you the picture. You've probably seen some pictures of them. Those are terrible pictures, by the way. They're actually horrifying and it's embarrassing, but they actually kinda do a halfway decent job of looking at it. The alewives larger on top, the bluebacks smaller on the bottom. Their life cycles are very similar, other than the alewife needs to get into ponded habitat to spawn. The blueback likes stream systems to spawn, gravel shoals, okay? Their eggs are adhesive, the alewives aren't. They both hatch out relatively soon after their, the eggs are in the water column. Okay, so we've covered that part. Back to the map. What's interesting about this map is when we look at this map, if we were to look at those colored blobs as kind of their, their range and extent, and then we were to actually make the colored blob actually reflect their current status as far as population size, you would barely be able to detect the blue and the pink. That's how far they've been reduced on the eastern seaboard from their habitat, okay? They're basically just been rubbed out, they're gone, okay? And we'll get into why this is important and why it's super critical that this species continues because they are keystone species. Alewife life cycle, we kinda covered it a little bit. Adults come in in the springtime, round about May. Males and females go upstream. The population is split just about 50/50. 50% males, 50% females. They swim upstream, they spawn. Bluebacks down on the stream down below, alewives up in the ponds up above. The adults will immediately try to split the system after they've spawned. They'll drop out and go back to the ocean, okay? They're sexually mature at four years old. That's usually the first time we see them spawn. Every once in a while you get some precocial young ones that will come in with the crowd trying to figure out what everybody's doing. And, but after they spawn, the adults will try to leave. The kids will stay in the freshwater system. In the case of alewives, sometimes up to six months. I've seen them drop out as late as December. Depending on the system, depending on the quality of feed in the system, and also depending on the water resources available in the system, sometimes it can be hard to get out in the fall. It's dry, it's late summer. The pond might be below the invert of its outlet so that the fish can't dump out. And then you have to wait for one of them big fall storms to come up and then they dump out, head back to the ocean, grow up for four years, come back as adults again, repeat the cycle. Once you have a fully established alewife population that's relatively stable, there'll be returns every spring from adult classes. Unlike the Pacific salmon, alewives don't all, you know, the Pacific salmon all die after they spawn. It's a one-shot deal, okay? Alewives and bluebacks can return to spawn multiple times. We see alewives and bluebacks up to nine years old come back in some of our sampling programs and they've spawned five times. And they actually continue to get bigger. We've got alewives up to a foot long. So that's the alewife life cycle. Grow out, grow up in the ocean for four years, come back as adults, spawn, drop back out to the ocean. Kids drop back out, you know, three to five months later. They grow up. The cycle continues itself again and again and again. So remember, I was told to put this forward to our new division director and, you know, they wanted it on river herring ecology. And this is a remarkable word ecology from the Greek house, okay? This is the study of the house. Everything surrounding a particular object, okay? And when you really dig into it, it's a pretty powerful word. I was telling some other folks, you know, that you see primary production, petogenesis, nutrient cycling. I had to look up petogenesis. I didn't know what it was. It's dirt formation, okay? Pretty important dirt. But this, gotta remember, this is about river herring ecology. And it's remarkable how powerful these ecosystems are once they're up and running. And I'll give you a little background and I'll be brief. When I first started working for the state of Maine, I was a much younger, handsomer, bald, you know, not as bald and thinner. I've been with the state for 28 years. I started working on the Kennebec River and we stocked basically what amounted to a vestigial population, the remaining stocks of alewives in the Kennebec River. We pumped them up out of the river literally with a giant vacuum cleaner of TransVac, put them in stocking trucks, drove them up basin to historically known habitat, dumped them out of the truck and turned around and did it again. And on a good season, we could get maybe 120,000 fish moved around the basin, okay? This is remarkable in that that 120,000 fish took five people, my crew and myself, 14 hours a day, seven days a week, to catch them, get them into a truck and distribute them to historical habitat. Fast forward 28 or 29 years. This is the 20th year since the removal of Edwards Dam on the Kennebec. We now have a population that varies a little bit, but you know, I've seen as high as 6 million returns at the first fishway and this year we had 3.2 million, okay? And that's just the escapement. We have to add the commercial harvest on top of that and it was closer to 5 million, okay? So we went from 120,000 fish per a season's effort to a run in the millions, you know, three to six million fish per year, per year coming back. We saw the bald eagle population explode from, everybody would stop what they're doing and go, "Look, a bald eagle," to now, you know, in Beton Falls, it has one of the highest, if not the highest naturally occurring aggregation of bald eagles east of the Mississippi. We see 60 to 80 there. All working that fish over, striped bass, everything eats these fish. And we'll cover that in a second. One final definition, keystone species. This is a species that has a disproportionately large effect on everything else around it, okay? This is kinda the cow and the grass thing, you know? You've got no grass, you've got no cows. That grass is a keystone species to those cows. No grass, no cows. Nobody raises cows in the Sahara Desert because there's no grass, okay? Alewives are like that to a multitude of species. I'll show you a slide here after this next slide. It kinda gives you an inkling of how important these species are to all the other species that exist around them and are either reduced or completely removed from that habitat should this species cease to exist. Ecology. This is the most basic and simplest form of ecology that we're all quite familiar with, okay? This is a Boeing 747. It has one job to move you from one end of the place to the other end of the place and keep you alive while it's doing it. However, it's a very simple machine, okay? Has 6 million parts. 3 million of them are fasteners, okay? 200 miles of wire, okay? 75,000 engineering drawings to make that plane, okay? But it is indeed just a functional bit of aluminum flying through the air with an internal ecology designed to keep you alive and get you from one place to the next. What's the most important part on that plane? Anybody? Pilot's pretty important. The wings are super important. Fuel in the tanks is wicked important. Even the lavatory is wicked important. Yeah, passengers, super important, right? Every component of that airplane works together and is very important. Which one is the most important? Really, there's no right answer, you know? The landing gear are wicked important, you know? If you ask the pilot, how many plies are in the tires on the main landing gear? He's not gonna be able to answer you. What's the annealing process for the aluminum? He's not gonna be able to answer you. Who makes the windshield? How thick is the gold on the windshield? He's not gonna be able to answer that. The thing he does know is how to fly that plane. And that's the only thing he needs to know, really, is how to fly that plane. There's a lot of components and ecosystems that we don't understand and there's a level of faith here that they actually work once you let the machine start, okay? Turn the machine off, nothing works. You might as well park the plane on the tarmac and never put a passenger in it, okay? Pilot doesn't need to know everything about the plane, other than how it flies, how to land it, okay? Simple, simple ecosystem. About $280 million apiece. Okay, this is a blank slide. We're gonna go through a, basically a simple ecosystem set up with an emphasis on river herring, okay? This is the beginning of it. These are zooplankton. Sorry, they didn't come out in quite the right order. I'm no wizard with PowerPoint. This is the alewife. It eats zooplankton. It's strictly a plankton vor. What do the zooplankton eat? They eat algae, okay? So here you have the trifecta, the stool. You take any one leg away, okay? Particularly the phytoplankton, the algae, nothing else exists, okay? You can take the alewife out of this and you'll have algae and zooplankton and maybe other fish species, okay? But the idea here is, is this is what you need at the beginning to make it all work, at least in the case of river herring or alewives. You're gonna see these trophic, I'm basically building a small trophic cascade here, you know? We all learned about this in grade school, you know, the cows eat the grass, we get the milk, you know? It has to all work together. So alewives eat the zooplankton, zooplankton eat the phytoplankton, okay? Other things come along and eat the alewives, okay? And it rapidly starts to expand, okay? And all these, these energy flow directions, you know, the bald eagles eat alewives, okay? Macroinvertebrate populations are increased in the presence of alewives because they've raised the nutrient level of the water, okay? Ammonia is one. And you get more bugs, okay? More bugs feed multiple other species, not just river herring, okay? More bugs gets more songbirds. And we actually witnessed this at Beton Falls. Now Sebastopol River is a major warbler migratory corridor. We see multiple species of warblers using Sebastopol, which honest to God, we didn't see before because A, it was an impoundment. There was a big dam, so the bugs didn't do well anyways. And now it's a river again. And in the presence of alewives, we've seen, you know, multi-fold increase in both species types and numbers, okay? And most of these aquatic benthic invertebrates have an adult form that flies around. Catfish flies and stuff like that and the warblers go crazy for them, okay? So things that eat warblers show up. And this keeps going and going and going and going and going. And pretty soon, other things are eating other things, okay? There's an eel there, you know, an American eel. Tons of stuff eat American eel, okay? Otters eat river herring, okay? Coyotes eat otters, okay? Bald eagles eat great blue herrings, particularly the chicks. The chicks, they love those, okay? It goes on and on and on. This little critter right there, anybody know that, right next to the Marine Resources, that critter right there? It's a freshwater mussel. Even if we were to put that in the center, not the river herring, there's a whole universe of connectivity with just that one creature right there, just one species. And we have multiple species. That freshwater mussel gets around by using other species, particularly other fish. And some of them are so specific, it's just down to one or two species of fish that the juvenile mussels will get around on. Okay, minx, cod, even black ducks eat river herring as juvenile. Snakes eat them. I've been doing this for 28 years and we've got a pretty long list of the animals that will eat river herring, okay? It's a long, long list. And at the center of this is that keystone species aspect where you get an idea, you know? And I kept this very basic. There's only, you know, there's only, I only had five minutes, right? So I had to pound it to them, okay? Coyote eats the minx. Everybody gets fed. You have this, you know, this biomass that comes in and phosphorus is the limiting factor for the algae in the pond, which is the limiting factor for the zooplankton, which is the limiting factor for alewife recruitment four years down the road, or at least past the juvenile phase when they drop out. So we have a problem, you know? This is one of the things that I was doing. We had to drive those trucks full of fish around dams in Maine, okay? Those are all the big dams in Maine, bigger, the ones we know about, the ones we've identified, you know? And there's a lot more than that, little smaller ones on these little tributary streams. When we first showed up here as pioneers, all the small rills and streams got plugged up first because those are the easiest ones to deal with. It wasn't until much later, you know, around the, you know, beginning of the 18th century or 19th century, we started putting dams across the bigger rivers, you know? In the case of Kennebec, I'll speak to what I know, Edwards Dam at Headtie went in in 1837. There was a commercial salmon fishery in Clinton, Maine, commercial shad fishery. And instantly, those were shut off, okay? Those are just the dams that exist in the state. We haven't talked about culverts yet, okay? And we're not gonna. Just think about that though. These culverts are all, you know, if we were to put the culverts up on that map, everything would disappear, okay? This is yours. That river herring potential right there, I just used alewives. I didn't use any of the potential for the habitat for bluebacks down below. And that's a very conservative number, what the annual return would be yearly. We pawned boats similar to the size of McGunta Cook, Weber Pond in Vasselboro. We'll see anywhere from, you know, a quarter million to 700,000 show up. It varies from year to year, you know? It's not perfectly stable. It goes up and down based on both biotic and abiotic conditions. You know, low water in the fall, they can't get out. They might not make it. You know, a whole bunch of things can impact juvenile recruitment because when they're young, when they're small, they're born, they're about that long, okay? They basically look like a very piece of fine thread with eyeballs on it. They're not self-determined at that stage. The attrition rate for juvenile alewives is absolutely enormous. .00002% survive from egg to adult, okay? Two ten thousandths of a percent. Rough being a juvenile alewife because, you know, if we back up, that's why, okay? And that's just, you know, those are just larger players in the, in the game, okay? You know, to the big ocean, there's, including humans, I mean, there's a lot of critters that like to eat these, these river herring. And here's a quick fly-by-wire, you know, all these things that you see here eat river herring, you know, from whales to bacteria, and every last one of them, keystone species. Any questions? Go ahead.
Phosphorus, excuse me, you said phosphorus was going down?
No, not in the case of, you know, I guess I would ask you a question in regards to McGunta Cook. McGunta Cook has an internal load of phosphorus that's probably pretty long-lived, okay? And it's part of the background chemical component in the surrounding watershed too. So it, it comes in, it gets, you know, absorbed by plant matter. And in the case of the water, mostly algae, okay? And algae isn't migratory, you know? So it grows up, becomes big, strong algae. And then wintertime comes and it dies and becomes dead algae and it basically falls as a little tiny snowflake of algae to the bottom. And then it decomposes and then it comes back in to the system again and again and again. It's an internal, internally cycled load, okay? Go ahead.
Do the alewives wipe out any other existing species in a lake or river when they come in, when there are hundreds of thousands?
No. Someone, someone would argue the point. You know, and you'll hear it, you know, when you look up alewife on the internet, it's a lot like the "if it bleeds, it reads" idea of the newspaper, okay? You know, alewives have gotten into places where they don't belong, particularly the Great Lakes. When they built the Erie Canal, the anadromous form of alewives made it into the Great Lakes. Now, the Great Lakes is actually a misnomer. They're not lakes. They're freshwater oceans, seas, basically. And there was enough resource in those lakes for those anadromous alewives to complete their entire life cycle without returning to the ocean, okay? So it became problematic for them. And to add to that, you know, there were, in the Finger Lakes of New York, there was a landlocked form of alewife that occurred post-glaciation. And those were distributed all over Helen Gone as a form of bait fish to use to bolster internal food sources for game fish that were also introduced. So those got spread all over the place. But in these natural runs, you know, the co-evolution of most of these species, they actually do better in the presence of alewives because there's this huge flush of food, you know, particularly for the piscivorous fish that will feed on them, you know, the bass and trout and, you know, they feed on them, so.
What's piscivorous?
Fish eater, fish eater. Sorry, sorry. Any other questions?
Did you say there's a commercial fishery for alewives?
Yeah, yeah.
And they're for bait, right?
Yeah, and they're also for food. They do get used for food. In fact, back in the day, we used to eat them by the barrel full, literally. But, you know, with the advent of Walmart and Hennepin and Shop and Save, we don't eat fish that way anymore. But they used to be salted and smoked and stored for the long cold winters up here as a form of protein that was relatively easy to get. In fact, not too terrible long ago, historically speaking. Back in the early 1940s, a couple scientists went around the state, rounds fell in stringer. And basically, they went and looked at all the runs and extent in the state of Maine, not in, with an eye towards restoration, but with an eye towards national security, okay? They wanted to can those fish, okay, and have them as food, just in case, you know? And it's only in the past, you know, six or seven generations that we've, you know, it used to be everybody, everybody knew what studio was, you know?
If you want to taste smoked alewives,
Yep.
You'd go to Sammy's Deluxe, they drop them.
Yep.
Smoked them themselves, they're deckled them, and they're delicious.
Yep, they're outstanding, really. The backstraps out of them are delicious after you smoke them. And the rest of it's like eating a really delicious screen door because they're bony, you know? So if you're, if you're smart, you sit down with a fork and your stein or your pint and you take it all apart with your fork, you know, and then eat it, you know, versus just eating the screen door part.
Back a while ago, the Russians were here. They harvested men, that sort of issue.
Yeah, they were, they were targeting...
Can you repeat since for anybody else listening, can you repeat the question?
Oh, right.
It catches on the line.
This, this last question, the lady said, you know, back in the late 80s and early 90s, there were Russian factory trawlers here, okay? And they were scooping up bunker, pogies, Menhated, okay? The interesting thing about that species is it's also in the herring family, like Atlantic herring, like American shad, okay? All these fish eat the same things, okay? So just like you and you and you and you and you, if I wait at McDonald's long enough, you're gonna show up, okay? So we all go to the same place to eat. Eventually, I'll see you drive by though. So they eat that. And so all those fish that got hoed out of the ocean and turned into basically fish pellets and oil, you know, that was, you know, that wasn't just one species. If you go and do a trawl, a paired trawl for, you know, Atlantic herring, you're not just gonna catch Atlantic herring. You're gonna catch probably three or four, at least, other species, maybe in lesser numbers and sometimes greatly lesser numbers of other herring types that are all plankton vor. They're eating plankton. The bloom happens in one spot. Everybody runs to the bloom. It's kinda the McDonald's idea, so. Go ahead.
Are there any known invasive species or sort of hitchhikers that might make their way up into the lake if, if there were stans or, or desirables?
No, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a really, this lady asked a question about invasive species and I have tons of experience with invasive species. Interestingly, I didn't add the list of species that are in McGunta Cook now. What's in there now? What's in McGunta Cook now for species? Okay, brown trout.
Perch.
Perch, okay. Small-mouth bass, okay.
Large moose.
Large-mouthed bass.
Any eels, eels?
Eels.
Other eels?
Yes. Okay, greatly reduced. Pickle, okay. The pickerel, the only two I'm gonna give you maybe are white perch and brook trout, okay? Everything else is introduced. It's only a function of semantics that we call them introduced and not invasives because we like fishing for...
White perch in the country?
Yeah. Yeah, they were probably introduced, you know? White perch are typically a fish of the estuary. They're not, you know, pond fish, okay? We introduced them everywhere. In fact, we spent the first 100 years shoveling fish from one pond to the other, 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 okay? Because we like to catch them. We introduced European carp, common carp, okay? Okay, now we're seeing pike pop up all over the place, okay? Good news is the McGunta, McGunta Cook system is very discreet. The river from the ocean is quite short, okay? That means whatever invasive species was gonna swim up the fishway... That means whatever invasive species was gonna swim up the fishway has to be very salt tolerant in order to get there, okay? There's only a few species that are really salt tolerant that way, and almost all of those are anadromous, okay, i.e. native here, okay? To swim up the fishway, there's the highest probability of an invasive showing up, we've already talked about, that came in the form of a five-gallon pail and some dude with two legs, okay? Because they like to fish for something, okay? I mean, we, we have several accounts of people backing bass boats down to Lake X, wherever it happens to be, and, you know, somebody hears something thumping around in the back of the boat, and they're, you know, basically they open up the live locker, and there's a pike in there, or two, or three, you know? Because they wanna put pike in that pond. Go ahead.
You don't consider eels to be invasive species?
No.
So here's a question that has preoccupied me for a number of years. We see the elvers coming to Camden Harbor.
Mm-hmm.
We see them being caught.
Yeah.
Do they, did they, oh, thank you, thank you. We see the elvers coming into Camden Harbor, we see them being caught. Not all of them get caught, obviously. Do those who are not caught, are they able to make their way up past the other dams to the lake? Or if not, what happens to them? And why do they keep coming back if they don't make it to the lake, number one? And number two, if they do make it to the lake, are they contributing to that population? Or is the population kind of a stable population that has been there forever?
That's a wicked good question. And I'll, I'll cover it. Eels. Eels are our only diadromous species that is catartrumous, the exact opposite of anadromy. They grow up in the freshwater, they spawn in the Sargasso Sea. The eels you see being caught in the elver nets down in Camden Harbor have taken a random left-hand turn out of the Gulf Stream, okay, and are looking for fresh water, okay? That's it, okay? And do they make it to the pond? Yes, they do, okay? But we, we have to think of it as a, a function of the gauntlet, okay? There's things trying to eat them, including us, okay? And then there's the fact that there's, you know, things in the road, big things. So that's like, you know, the fire alarm goes off, and we all have to get out of this room, but nobody's allowed to use the door, okay? So, you know, 10,000 eels show up at the base of the first dam, you know? Do a thousand make it over? They're probably the most able of our fish species, in fact, the most able of any fish species, really, to get where they need to go. But there is a limit, okay? They're also extraordinarily long-lived, okay? We've studied a bunch of them that came out of the Sebastakook system, and the median age was 19 or 20 years old, that sexual maturity, female about that long and about that big around, okay? It's a 20-year-old animal, okay? So they have a long loiter time in the system, and they have a one shot. Not only are they catartrumous, but they only get to spawn once, okay? They go to the Sargasso Sea, put every last bit of energy, it's remarkable, this is, this is one of the coolest fish I work with at the state, because it's the only fish I work with, when you look at it, it looks back at you. They recognize things. In fact, there's some at Weber Pond, the vast bulk of them, that, this is gonna sound funny, but they recognize me. And after I work up a bio sample, I can go down and sit in the water with my chest waders on, and put my hand out, and they'll come up and eat out of my hand. If somebody there and goes and sits there with me, the eels won't come up. They'll slowly come up, you know, and they'll check and see if it's safe, but if it's just me, they'll just come up, it's like a, literally a herd of puppies, you know? They'll start pulling the food right out of my, my hand. They, they recognize, they live for a long time, they're, you know, humans. Huh? The fish from the sample, you know? The juvenile alewives don't like being netted, they're not rugged enough to survive getting netted, put into five-gallon pail, put on a measuring board, and you measure it, and then you call out the number, and somebody else writes it, and then you, you know, by the time you let it go, it's like you've been run over here in traffic, you know, you're pretty hammered. The good news is, we only do a 50-fish bio sample, and we only do it every couple of weeks to a month, you know? Those eels are extraordinarily long-lived, and they're a very important component of the ecosystem function as a whole. They're scavengers, in fact, they're, they're more than just that, they're basically, you know, an aquatic omnivore. If it moves, or even if it doesn't move, they're gonna try to eat it if they think it's edible, you know? And, you know, they live a long time, so, you know, every, every, you know, 10,000 eels show up at the first dam, maybe, you know, and they're incredible climbers, they're really good, but there is a limit to what they can do, you know? More washing water it is, the harder it is, they're always stuck on the edges, and that makes them susceptible. And there's several species of animal, the grackle is a consummate eel hunter, you know? So are seagulls, if they find a concentration of them, they'll go right after them, so. A grackle is a type, type of bird, you know, it looks kind of like a cowbird, like a red-winged blackbird, you know, about that size, very intelligent bird, and once it figures out where a food source is, it'll go after it, you know? Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. It's good stuff, good eating in a eel, you know? Go ahead.
Besides the Kennedick, what other rivers in Maine have, we tried to introduce the herring and alewives too, I know Damascotta is another one.
Yep.
And are there any where we tried a reintroduction and it's failed?
Very few places. The, the question was, are there any other places where we've tried river herring introductions? He mentioned Damascotta. There are several other places. Penobscot has just come online, the, the run of, of river herring in the Penobscot has gone from, you know, relatively minimal, when we started stocking one of the, you know, the known historic basins within the Penobscot, Pushaw Lake, about 12 years ago or so, and we started stocking that. And we usually, the method, our methodology is, okay, we're gonna stock for one full life cycle, okay? So we're gonna hit a water body for four years, okay? And then we're gonna wait in the springtime and see what shows up, and we haven't failed yet, okay? Typically, they're, you know, they're very good, even though that attrition rate that I told you about, that point zero 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 two percent, because each female carries about at least 100,000 eggs, you know? Only a small number of females can literally, you know, produce billions of offspring, you know, and that's, it's a numbers game, you know? So they, they work on the numbers end of things. Go ahead.
Steve, what do we know about our local blueback herring and alewife population now? I mean, like, I know that they come into the harbor.
Yep.
And wanna go up the river, but are obviously prevented from doing that.
Yep.
What, what happens to those fish that now that are not making it up the river?
That, that's a, a super good question. This is what we know, and I can equate it to this crowd, okay? We call it straying, okay? Basically, when I look at the crowd in here, I see a lot of strays from Europe, okay? Yeah, pretty much, the entire crowd is a stray from Europe, okay? Built into the, the DNA map of the river herring, alewives, is a desire to not put all their eggs in one basket. The natal water homing is very strong, okay? Incredibly strong. But amongst that population, there are those that say, well, this smells pretty good over here, you know, let's go check out over here. If that, that natal watershed, that natal pond was 100%, the fidelity was 100%, there'd only be one pond in Maine with river herring or, or alewives. There'd only be one river with, with Atlantic salmon. That, that stray component is why you see them in the harbor, okay? These, these fish that, you know, came up to the, and they just decided not to go where everybody else was going, and then they went and checked out someplace new, and that's how they colonized this whole eastern seaboard, was by checking out new spots. Some of them worked, okay, some of them didn't work. But that's, that's why you see them poking around, sniffing around, it's basically how they do it, you know, they sniff around, they find. To give you an example, in 2008, Fort Halifax Dam, the first lowest-most dam on the Sebastakook River, was removed. In the spring of 2009, I was waiting below the remnants of a, of a dam on outlet stream from China Lake, watching, and just like clockwork, there were 10,000 alewives below that dam, and there hasn't been a dam, you know, a river herring or an alewife in China Lake since about 1757. But they smelled that water coming out of China Lake, very rich, high in nutrients, and they wanted to get up there. And that's what I'm currently, one of the projects I'm working on right now, where this close, another couple fishway installations and another maybe dam removal, and we're gonna be in, and it's 4,000 acres of primetime, and it's good for a million fish per year per year. And it'll add to that Sebastakook load of fish that are showing up every year, and, you know, ticking up a million. And that's that much more fish for the striped bass and for the bald eagles and all the other stuff that we show to feed on.
What does the great rise in sea temperature affect the beneficial, how does that benefit?
That, the, the whole, everybody hear that question?
Yeah, repeat it for that.
Yeah, the, what is the, you know, the rise in sea temperature? So far, we haven't seen an impact, at least on river herring, you know? We know the lobster industry is pretty worried, okay? We've seen a decline in smelt populations coming from the south to the north, you know? So far, you know, river herring seem to be tolerating it quite well, as far as ocean temperature goes.
So what do you expect the impact to be of Lake McGunta Cook restoring an alewife run after 200 years?
Well, certainly from the ecological standpoint, there'll be a lot more, it'll be a lot more robust as far as animals in and around the stream utilizing that resource. And, and there's also potential for a future harvest on top of it, which would be revenue for the town. Typically speaking, what the town would do, you know, they'd request historical rights to the run, and I think it was extirpated in, what, 1804? It was pretty early on, and, you know, there could be a, a limited commercial harvest, and the rest allowed to, for escapement. You guys know how the commercial harvests work? By statute, it's, it's four-three. You can fish for four days of the week, and then you have to have open escapement for three, okay? To ensure that you got enough let go, so that four years later, you don't see the, the population tank, you know? Which happened in multiple, multiple places. It used to be we'd have one day of escapement and six days of fishing. And we watched several runs, in fact, I have a graph somewhere else which basically shows, you know, the, the population decline of alewife based on harvest, I mean, it just tanked by the 1950s, that it was full-blown panic from the standpoint of the state, you were losing this resource, you know, that, you know, that can renew itself yearly, and so we started cranking down. Go ahead.
So this would open up commercial fishing during the summer months and change the character from being recreational.
No, 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 it would, you know, the, typically speaking, the commercial harvest doesn't happen in the lake, it happens on the stream, okay? And it happens four days out of seven in a week, and it happens from basically about May 1 to about June 6, okay? By statute, okay? So it would be a very limited window of opportunity there.
Are that specific alewives or just all river fish?
Yes, all river herring.
All river herring.
It's very specific, very, very specific, pointed. And even, you know, even if we were to start now, and let's say every dam was out, or there was a fish passage, we, it was open, we could get in. Basically, we start doing our biological sampling in the springtime, and we have to prove sustainability to the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission before they give the green light for a harvest. So it's many, many years down the road, that aspect of it. And again, it would be just in the stream, not in the lake, and just adults moving upstream, not down. So no other fish species would be targeted, it would just be river herring.
Could you please address the impact of our local eel elvers fishery on the eel population of the area? I'm, I'm gonna say the area because I mentioned it's impacting other bridges. Can you repeat the question?
The, the, the question at hand is, you know, what, what impact does the elver fishery have on the eel population? The current quota for the state of Maine, and I think there's only one other state that actually allows.
South Carolina.
South Carolina allows a fishery on the glass seals, the, um, the quota for Maine is, I think, 9,000 pounds and change. There are 2,000 eels in a pound. Any mathematicians here, what's that, 18 million? My math might be off. The impact here is because of the fishery down in, in Camden Harbor, right at the threshold of the McGunta Cook, any eels that would be making the attempt have to run that gauntlet and get by all that, just to get to the first obstacle to get up over. So there's a reduction on that front, okay? And we see that in multiple other systems because the fishery is statewide until they reach that quota, and we have a swipe card system now, you know? Because we were worried about porosity, basically we were worried about poaching, and you guys have all read the paper, right? You've seen that stuff in the paper where, you know, some goon is down in New Jersey, and he's bringing them up here and selling them, and, you know, and then, you know, there's, there's a whole bunch of sleight-of-hand stuff happening with this incredibly valuable, anybody know the price per pound this year, what it turned out to be?
Over $2,000.
Yeah, it was over, over $2,000 a pound, okay? And there's 2,000 eels in a pound. It's a bucking eel, they're that long, you know? So this incredibly lucrative fishery, it's second only to lobster in value in the state right now. Baby eels, second only to lobster, okay? So the impact is what the impact is. I mean, when you look at the, at the, you know, the number of eels it takes up to make that 9,000 pounds, and we actually worked this out as a, as a bit of fun math to, to just show, this is probably one of the most impacted species by dams, okay, eels. The reason why is because you've got a really big dam, usually the further up a system you go, the more highly potential, the, the greater the potential that that eel, when it's an adult, is going to be female, okay? Further up the system you go, bigger the eel is, because they don't differentiate sexually until close to sexual maturity, i.e., they, you know, you can't, you can take an eel and walk it over the head and cut it open, and I can't tell if it's male or female. They only start to change when it comes close to being time for them to head down system and head out to the Sargasso Sea and spawn. So that 9,000 pounds of eels, bear with me here, this'll only take a second. Okay, 9,000 pounds of eels, okay, 2,000 per pound, that's 18 million, so my first math was correct, okay? That's 18 million eels, okay? One female eel carries 1 million eggs. So hypothetically, 18 female eels could account for the entire quota in the state of Maine. 18. Problem is, when we threw up all these dams all over the place, there was no provision for downstream passage for eels, okay? There's no deep gate, okay? And nobody even thought to open. So what happens when they go to some late October evening, dark moon, it's rainy out, and the eels decide they wanna go? And the dam's running. Where do they go? They go through the turbine, you know, so they don't get to complete their life cycle. But literally, a 55-gallon drum.
Threw up about that deep with females.
Is enough to do the entire quota, hypothetically, if the survival was 100% from egg to, you know, 18. So that impact on the juveniles, and you gotta remember, when the juveniles are coming back, they're not coming back home. Home to them is the Sargasso, okay? That's the bedroom, they're coming here to grow up. So they're just, you know, randomly taking left-hand turns out of the Gulf Stream and finding fresh water and heading up it. This is the, one of the most capable, one of the most diverse fish species that we have, you can live in anything from a five-gallon pail of mud to a lake the size of Moosehead, you know? The other thing we know is the further north you go, the older they get before they sexually mature. So, go ahead.
Can you talk a little bit about dam removal versus? Can you talk a little bit about dam removal versus fish passage? And obviously, there are some dams that cannot. And obviously, there are some dams that cannot be removed without an enormous impact on the area, so we definitely would need to keep a good number of them. But just, what are the considerations? What, what are the problems with fish passage, any?
Yeah, yeah. Fish passage versus dam removal. When you remove a dam, that's basically it, it's fire and forget, okay? It's gone. You have technically built a fish passage, okay? Where the dam was anti-fish passage, okay? So you've taken it out. When you install a fish passage in a dam, you now have an obligation, okay? Because the fish passage is not fire and forget, you have to pay attention to it, it has to be cleaned, it has to be maintained, it has to be opened, it has to be shut, okay? Forever, for the lifetime of the passage, okay? And it has to be cleaned, it has to be opened, it has to be repaired, okay? It has to be shut, baffles have to be replaced, somebody has to pay attention to it, okay? Whereas a dam removal, well, it's a river again, you know? And there's, you know, everybody can swim right by it.
Just one question, what did the fish do before human intervention? They didn't have to move.
No, they, we just, yeah, they just swam. Yeah, they just swam, you know? Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we, you know, I deal with a lot of fishways, I deal with a lot of not-fishways. By far, the, the cheaper option is a dam removal, in the long run, because it requires no maintenance, no oversight, nobody standing there scratching their head trying to figure out why it's not working just right, you know? There's a lot to it, go ahead.
One of the issues that was raised recently that I hadn't thought of about dam removal has to do with the amount of polluted silt that exists in, uh, one of the issues that was raised to me recently about dam removal is the amount of polluted silt that has accumulated over the centuries in a river like the McGunta Cook, which has had a lot of industrial and agricultural activity on it and on its sides. And that, uh, polluted silt can create tremendous problems downstream once it starts to move. I don't know whether that's a temporary effect, or how long life would it be?
Typically speaking, in dam removals, particularly with, you know, highly contaminated sediment load, a lot of the times, it'll be a very gradual drawdown in the dam, uh, very gradual, and then the materials, the accumulated materials behind the dam, in some cases, are actually excavated and removed, and, you know, put, covered in a landfill somewhere so they don't continue to leach out into the environment. It all depends on the industrial nature and the time period when it occurred, you know, things like, you know, tanneries and different industries produce different amounts of gross stuff, you know? And some of it was gross, I mean, really bad. It all depends on that level of contamination, you know, what it looks like, uh, whether there's, you know, as the process of the dam removal gets down further and further towards the original depth of the stream, materials can be removed. In the case of not a high contamination load, the dam might be breached, and Mother Nature allowed to do its course, because we hear it a lot, at least in my work, you know, this stretch of the river is sediment-starved. Meanwhile, the impoundment above it, in the dam, is sediment-choked, you know? And so a great deal of work has to be done, you know, you know, on the Susquehanna River, you know, there's a dam down there, what is it, Conawingo, uh, you know, where the, you know, the impoundment, which is absolutely enormous, is, you know, three-quarters occluded by sediment, you know, because the Susquehanna carries a tremendous sediment load. The water slows down when it comes into the impoundment and drops its load, and then, you know, there it stays, meanwhile, the water that goes through and over the dam doesn't have that sediment load, and that natural process, that transport of, you know, highly-nutrient-rich material ceases to occur downstream, and it impacts the way the river lives downstream. It goes from being a sediment-rich environment to a very sediment-poor environment, and that impacts every form of life that lives there, further downstream. It's a really good question. There were several industries that occurred here in town, and there probably is some contamination issues, you know? You know, there was a tannery, there was, you know, there was, you know, that, that stuff, in the case of a dam removal, typically speaking, what happens is it gets tested and looked at, you know, to determine the level of contamination, and whether it needs to be abated as the dam comes out, or it can be flushed, you know?
When you were explaining it, it's really, it costs you a knowledge, but you can break the dam.
Right.
In Petco, Mass, or where, Millie Turner Dam was broken down, and this is freshwater crossing, and it had terrible effect on the bi valves that were downstream.
Yeah.
So they had to put a temporary dam in there, relocate.
Yeah, the material.
And whatnot, but, uh, that's taxpayer money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, so what's the batting average of fishways as opposed to taking out the dam? Are they efficient enough if you have, like, a camel-like vehicle with some, like, the, it would really mess things up a lot even if they come out, because it's very close to town, so I'm thinking fish ladders sound like a great idea. Um, are they a good option?
Well, they're better than no option.
Yeah, they're better than no option, but, you know, are there, like, little fish ladders, or can you kind of just barely worth it, or bigger fish ladders?
Typically speaking, we like to design, uh, fish ladders based on the population of fish that we're talking about, the prime driver, which in this case would be something like elwif, elwif would be the prime driver, and we'd look at the amount of surface acreage habitat we have up there, and you saw the number I had up on the screen, you know, it was about, you know, 300,000 and change, and we designed that fishway to accommodate that, plus quite a bit more, you know, uh, knowing the, the natural variation in that population, okay? But having worked with a multitude of fishways, and there are fishway engineers that will tell you this, fishway technology has been around a while, but we're still in its infancy, really. Some fishways work better than others, you can have two identical fishways, layouts completely the same, and one will perform flawlessly, and the other one will be a complete and utter dog, you know? And it could be something as, as simple as how the sunlight strikes it, and when it strikes it. So a lot goes into, when you build a technical fishway, that's what we call these things, a lot of thought goes into them, and a lot of review, and, uh, because we have built dogs, okay? And we spend a lot of time trying to figure out why, and we've learned a lot. The cost, there is a cost associated with putting in a fishway, and it's twofold cost, the, the, actually, it's a threefold cost. There is the cost of the fishway, okay? There's also the cost, the untold cost of the fact that you're putting a fishway in for a reason, because you have a dam, okay? I.e., you're keeping the dam, so you have to take care of it, okay? So there's that cost. And then there's the maintenance, you know, and operations cost. Somebody got to clean it, somebody got to take care of it, somebody got to, you know, there's a cost. Where a dam removal, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, you know, I've been at some awful contentious meetings, trust me, uh, dam removal is a one-time cost. You take it out, you've basically installed the best fish passage known to man, which is a natural stream bed. That's the, you know, that's the, and I understand completely, you know, you talk about removing the outlet dam from McGunta Cook Lake, there's going to be a small civil war here in short order, you know? So that's, you know, obviously, a technical fish passage installation, we're a lot better at figuring those out now than we were, you know, just a century ago, you know? Fish tech, fish passage technology is a relatively new thing, and it's nothing's quite so simple as that 747 I showed you, okay? That's a simple thing, okay? Because you're dealing with a biologic, you know, something that thinks on its own, and it might not like what you're showing it, you know? So you take a lot into consideration when you put it in a fish passage. Go ahead.
Does taking out a dam imply that you're going to drop the level of the lake? My understanding is when you take the dam out, it'd be like out on Route 131, the lake, there's ways to design it so the lake level can stay the same.
Yep, yep. There's, um, a lot of ways to skin this cat, you know? And a lot of it, you start with the initial history, how, you know, what's the effective hydraulic head of this dam? I mean, the outlet dam of McGunta Cook, you know? I mean, how much water does it really impound, you know? And what else could you do to impound that water, like a nature-like fishway? I mean, there's examples of that here in the state, like the outlet of, you know, Sennebeck Pond over there in Union Appleton, you know, where they removed a dam well downstream, and they put in a, basically, a weir that you, if you didn't know any better, you'd never know it was there, that basically maintained the height of the pond where the dam had it, but now there's no dam. So, there's, you know, lots of stuff can be done, you know? Go ahead.
Have there been any studies done on the effect that elwif have on bass population? Or, or results?
Uh, there's been no, that, the, the question was, have there been any, any studies on the impact elwif have on bass? In fact, there have been, and they've all been, remember I said if it bleeds, it reads, the St. Croix, if anybody wants some interesting reading that will bore you right to tears, what happened up on the St. Croix system was that there was a perception that the elwif were negatively impacting the small-mouthed bass fishery up there. And the small-mouthed bass fishery up there is a major source of income for guides, and in Washington County, any source of income is an incredibly important source of income because it's an incredibly poor county. Well, there was kind of a crash in the bass population up there on one lake in particular, Spednik Lake, and that whole cause and effect came into be where we saw a crash in the bass population, we saw an increase in the elwif population, ergo, the elwif are what made the bass go away, okay? And they clung to that like a drowning man clings to a life preserver, okay? But you have to be very careful when you look at this stuff on cause and effect, because sometimes, you know, the effect that you're seeing, it isn't being caused by the cause you think is making the effect, okay? It really had nothing to do with elwif, okay? It had to do with how the lake was managed mostly, as far as a power source. Typically, what we see, if anything, the fishermen complain that the, the bass are harder to catch because they're well-fed. What we see on Weber Pond is, is, uh, you know, the bass are getting bigger faster because they're on this incredibly rich food source, and it made the top 20 of the top, whatever it was, of New England bass waters, you know, for large-mouthed bass, and it's, we've seen bass hanging out at the, the exit of the fishway. This is going to sound funny, because it is funny, and it'll be a big bass, I mean, large mouth, you know, six and a half, seven pounds, and people will cast to that thing, put stuff right in front of it all day long, and it won't eat anything, and if you look at the bass closer, you can see two tails sticking out of its mouth of elwif, and it's just hanging out there because it's too fat and lazy to swim further away, because it knows eventually it's going to get hungry again, and I'll just hang out here by the fishway and eat the next one that comes out. So, you know, in reality, if anything, you know, all the studies we've seen come out of there, it actually, you know, increases the fitness of the fish, and that's strictly anthropogenic desire, we like to fish, uh, you know, and it ignores all the other benefits across the board, which are, you know, that little slide I showed with all the, the little lines, that's real, that's as real as it gets, okay? The keystone species has, because it's particularly, you know, here in Maine, where most of the runs that we have in extent now are just a, you know, a small portion of the ones that were here historically. Go ahead.
I wanted to clarify something, that if I understood you correctly, I think you said that it was unclear how much the dams contributed to the height of Lake McGunta Cook? And is, is that correct? Did I understand? And, and so you're saying you, put it another way, you don't know what the natural height of the lake is for sure? Or is there some way we could get a feel for what that would be?
Oh, we know, we'd figure that out right away.
It hasn't.
Yeah, I'd just knock on up there and, you know...
Oh, you haven't done it?
Yeah, right.
But it's a perfectly ascertainable matter.
Well, you know, I'll give you an example. This is how weird it gets. Pardon me while I sit down. China Lake, we've been working on, and I've been working on restoration in China Lake for, since 2001. There's an outlet dam at China Lake. Its effective hydraulic head is just a hair under six feet by the book. Strangely enough, I was out there surveying with a, with a gentleman from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, a fellow by the name of Fred Seavy, and I got the, the dumb end of the stick, he ran the instrument, I ran the staff, right? So I'm out there in a boat, and I'm surveying the, the approach to the dam, and this is what we determined, that the hydraulic lock of the lake isn't really the dam, it's a gravel bar or gravel shoal 300 yards from the dam. So you got to survey to understand what it is, and you can understand why these dams were built, you know? Water is good, more water is better, particularly when it comes to industry, because you ride these things like a battery, that's what they are, these water bodies are batteries, okay? And you flip the switch, and it turns on the lights, and makes the machine go round and round and round. In the early case of things, it was all hydro-mechanical, and in the case of the larger mainstem rivers, it went from hydro-mechanical to hydroelectric, okay? Where they figured out how to make electricity by spinning something around and around, okay? So the effective hydraulic head of the dams can be deceiving, you know, what you actually see, uh, versus what's really there underneath, you know? My guess is it probably raised McGunta Cook Lake up quite a bit, you know? Because some water is good, more water is better, so...
Yeah, and without it, they flushed the outlet, actually.
Yep, yep.
Paul Leapers, there's, there's, I mean, this could be a whole big, long presentation about the historic levels of McGunta Cook Lake.
Absolutely.
But, um, I think everybody's in Camden, at least that I've talked to, would be very committed to keeping the level of, whatever it is, whatever we end up doing, the level of McGunta Cook Lake would need to stay.
Yeah.
Play where it is.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate changing that at all, I want to get out of town with my skinhole. Go ahead.
About the level of the river, you're using the word "stream," what happens to the river?
Well, it's, you know, it's upstream slash river, I mean, and...
You mean the area behind Seabright?
Between the two dams.
Well, there are six dams, um, on the...
Between Shorttail Pond and...
That's the Seabright.
Yeah, so we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars as a town into repairing Seabright, um...
Are we talking about the snowball now, or are we talking about...
That is not my area to, but, but Seabright is another one that would stay, and the DEP even classifies the area behind Seabright now as a pond, and so to, when we went to, to look at repairing the Seabright Dam even, there was, it was going to be a significant issue if we wanted to, we couldn't even lower the water level in order to, to repair that. It was considered basically a pond with wading bird habitat, and it's been like that for so long.
I have to disagree with that, I mean, we've been on the river for over 30 years, and I can think of multiple times where the river bed has been blown dry, it's been drained.
Well, that was, it's, yeah, they didn't want us to do it, this, when it was, when it was fixed this last time, that was explored because it would have been cheaper, and the DEP said that we would have had to go along and take every little muscle or whatever stray animal and toss it into the, it was, basically, what I'm saying is that that is another one that, um, the initial conversations have said we would not, nobody would advise us to remove that one or to lower that one. That is probably one of the easiest in terms of building a fish passage around it, because you have so much real estate there, um, on both sides, and the sluice way is already, or the spillway is already really, really large, because it had to be so big for the power generation, that you kind of, so far, it seems like that's one of the easiest ones to build a fish passage around.
It's an impact, and it says, "God, you know, save all the rivers."
Oh, yeah, we can't, that would be a big drop for, that, that, there'd be a, there'd be a revolution in Camden if we tried to, if you want, couldn't swim at Shorttail anymore? Yeah, that's another one. I think everybody's pretty committed to leaving just as it is.
Yeah, with, um, that many dams down here, it's downtown, uh, we got the lock, lock in front of the dam, the water comes over. If you got rid of the dam, the fish still aren't going to be able to get up there.
No. No.
So what is the potential, what is the rationale for getting rid of the dam?
Well, there's, you know, this is, this is all in the hypothetical stage right now, you know? What if you get rid of the dam? If you get rid of the dam, you have to make some accommodation, either a rough-and-rock ramp or some sort of fish passage, or you could put a technical fish passage in the dam. What usually happens with these studies is you wind up with, you know, an alternatives analysis. Do nothing is the first alternative and nothing changes. Do something, and that could be something A, you know, partial breach, B, full removal with, you know, some sort of additional modifications because the stream probably isn't anywhere near where it used to be.
And that's what Mike is gonna go into now.
Right. And I'm not gonna talk about that because Mike's gonna talk about that, so, go ahead.
What would the cost-effectiveness be to, if you wanted, the goal was to reduce ly McGuntecook? Just suck them out of the harbors and transport them on truck like you said you did in some other locations, and just dump them in the lake?
How cost-effective would it be?
Yeah, versus reconstructing all those dams all the way through, the cost between five and $10 million. Uh, you can transport those fish every year during the run. Pretty effective, I would say.
Yeah, they have to get back to the ocean. Everybody here, they don't...
They'll get batched.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll go down, they'll go downstream, no problem. I think it's just getting some...
But you would remove the lake environment along the riverbed?
Right, right. It can be done that way. We're, you know, the good news is I'm working on a project extraordinarily similar to this one, other than, you know, the lake is much larger, but it's six dams. The total project cost when all is said and done will have done at least two, if not three removals and three technical fish passage installations. It'll be somewhere in the order of five million for all of it. And when we're done, uh, you know, we'll have an open system. You can certainly do the truck stocking method, but that means the truck has to start every year, somebody has to know what they're doing, you have to build a trap, um, you know, and it has to happen every year without fail.
How much about five million is grant funding?
Uh, the vast majority of it.
Also, the maintenance of the dams is very costly as well.
Yeah, the, that, that...
You can segue, we probably need to start to segue to Mike because he'll go into some, you know, the alternatives analysis.
Yeah, yeah, the, what was your question again?
My question is comparing, comparing the cost, five million for dam removal to the cost of maintaining six dams over a period of time. Or spend how much on Seabright? Hundreds of thousands on Seabright.
Right, I mean, it's, you know, there's obviously costs involved. Once a dam is gone, you know, hypothetically, there's zero cost.
Because it's gone.
Once it's gone, you know? Um...
Now, Audra, do you want to introduce Mike to our, are you able to say name?
I can say.
Was Mike present on the...
Yes, yes. Maybe if we want to take like a, maybe if we want to take like a two to three-minute break so that everybody can shuffle around.
This is the one we used.
We've all had an introduction.
Sorry, that took so long, holy shit.
Yeah, yeah. Let's go to Mike.
This work session that we'd like to introduce. All right. No, it's not. Just, we have a second portion of this work session, which is the presentation discussion with Mike from Interflue. I'll let him introduce the company and their background. And just some months ago, just a 10-second intro, some months ago, the town of Camden engaged Interflue to do what you'll be discussing here, which is the feasibility study regarding the Montgomery Dam only. So with that, Mike, please take your light.
Okay, how's that? Volume okay? Not seeing anybody shaking their head, so I'll assume it's okay. All right. So, yeah, once again, I'm Mike Burke. I'm an engineer with Interflue. We're a small consultancy. We work exclusively on rivers and wetlands and streams and things around the country. I'm based in a field office here in Damerskada in the mid-coast. And we are a group of engineers and geologists and biologists and whatnot, work on many projects just like this one, or some working with communities just like the town of Camden on some very similar issues. So, about a year ago, we started taking a look at the Montgomery Dam to see what some of the options were there and talk through some of the feasibility of addressing some of the issues with the dam as well as restoring fish passage past the dam site. So we'll, I've got an overview of the results of that study. We published the final study report here a couple of months ago, so I'm not sure to what extent it's posted on the website or anything like that, but that's available. I'll hit the high points here and sort of a summary, but at times you may see me refer to things that are in the report, certainly available for anybody to take a look at. And obviously, if there are any questions that came up as you're reading through things or today, I'm really quite, quite happy to talk through things with you, so. So just, sorry, I had skipped ahead a slide there. So just for this talk today or overview, you know, generally an overview to the results of the study, we'll start by talking through some of the goals and objectives that were set for managing Montgomery Dam when we started in on the study. We'll talk through some of the results of the site assessment that we did, looking at things like, you know, what goes on underneath the buildings upstream of the dam and what the quality of the sediment is that's behind the dam, what the potentials are, and also the, how the dam influences flooding patterns and things through the downtown area. And then we'll talk through, as Nate very adeptly introduced, we went through a feasibility and alternatives analysis. So we looked at some different options for both managing and modifying the dam as well as some different options for restoring fish passage and some other factors. And then we'll kind of wrap it up with sort of a comparison of the alternatives that we looked at for each of the aspects of managing the dam and restoring fish passage. So just, you know, everybody knows what the head of Camden Harbor looks like, but just in terms of, you don't always get to see it from the air, so just got an overhead view here. I'll just point out a few things. Pretty fascinating to look at, actually. You can spend a lot of time looking at these things, but, so here's Main Street, Camden. And here is the lower portion of Harbor Park. This is the lawn behind the library. Obviously, some of the dock system down in here, the dinghy dock. And then behind Main Street, you have the Montgomery Dam, which has an L shape, traces down along like this. There's a gate structure right here that leads into what we call a penstock or a culvert that runs downhill and out onto the bedrock here. So there's a gate structure here, and then there's a spillway that runs from the great gate structure over in L shape. It's at its tallest height right next to the gatehouse. And, and then it gets increasingly shorter as it climbs up onto this pile of ledge that forms cascades in this direction and in this direction depending on what the water flow is. So then continuing on over here into the lower Harbor Park area, there's a seawall, the cut stone seawall that extends over in this direction. The town landing is over here. So anyway, just in terms of, just reminding ourselves of how things piece together here at the site. So what, in some of the initial discussions that we had when we started this study, had a bit of a kickoff meeting here in the same room a little over a year ago, and we talked about what were the things where there was a desire to accomplish with managing Montgomery Dam. So we actually passed around some packets of sticky notes, and everybody who was around the table wrote out a few ideas and things like that, and we kind of collected and coalesced those into a range of objectives that have been articulated. And those include things like addressing the degraded condition of the dam, and not only just that it's a degraded condition, but it requires maintenance, it requires a lot of management, it requires town funds, et cetera, in an operation and maintenance type of situation. Secondly, it's possible to reduce flood risk through downtown Camden. Thirdly, I just referred to reducing the need to manage the dam through the high-water season and also with significant rainfalls, and also having to manage repairs and whatnot. Fourth, enable fish passage, effective fish passage to get up past the site. And then fifth, maintaining, you know, obviously, this is a very notable location here in Camden, with a real desire to obviously maintain the scenic and historical qualities. And lastly, also doing what you could with this site to improve the overall health of the river. This is, Nate talked about Keystone Species. This is a Keystone Dam, even though it's relatively small and unassuming in stature, it is kind of the linchpin to the rest of the watershed, so. There's a, you know, there's a plethora of ecological processes that occur up and down the watershed from the headwaters to the ocean and back, and they all rely on the connectivity up and down through the watershed. All right, so I'll just talk through sort of the assessment phase of the study. So we came out, we did some surveying, we, Dave was kind enough to draw down the impoundment for us a couple of times, and so we were able to get up underneath the buildings and crawl through there and see what the condition was like underneath there and did some sampling of the sediment. We were able to walk through the stream from the dam up to Washington Street and see what the potential of the river channel would be with management of the dam and things like that. And then we did some hydraulic modeling to take a look at if you manage the dam, what is the, what is the impact of the dam on floodwater right now in the existing condition and what would happen if we managed the dam? Like I said, we sampled some sediment and had that analyzed and took a look at that. And I'll talk about that a little bit, and then also took a look at the condition of the structures as well. So, just a little bit of a historical overview. We referred a few times, there's been a dam on that site since the late 1700s, been reconstructed likely multiple times, but I'll just give you a few high points. So in this left picture, this is actually a survey map from the 1920s or so of the Montgomery Dam site. And so you can see that familiar L shape of the dam here. These lines indicate the pool or an impoundment behind the dam. And then you actually see a second dam over here in what is now kind of that open outlet channel behind the Mariners Restaurant, which historically was the Camden Grist Mill. And so water would be backed up behind Montgomery Dam and then moved through the grist mill and be impounded upstream of a second dam in that outlet channel. And then that water would most likely be utilized in manufacturing in what is now the town landing area. So here's a photograph from the archives, probably about that same time, the early 1900s.
That was 1869.
1869 on this photo. So again, you can see the dam up here on top of the ledge, and then you can see the second spillway here cascading down into that outlet channel. So the dam was reconstructed for the last time, or most recent time, there's been subsequent rehabilitation since this time, but reconstructed the last time in the early 1930s. And so you can see, the older dam was more of a conglomerate of different technologies and things, a lot more just straight-up masonry. You can see some, you know, wood pickets and things like that to retain soils and whatnot on that side, and a real simple wall here. And it was reconstructed much more stoutly with cut stone in the 1930s. This is a picture from the construction in the 30s. So, like Nate mentioned on the outlet stream, China Lake, really common through the settlement period, what we do have in Maine is a lot of ledge, a lot of ledge outcrops that if you treat them right, they can act like dams for you. And it was pretty common to, you know, move streams from where they had historically found the best course on down to the ocean. the best course on down to the ocean. Over on top of a piece of bedrock over here and fill in the stream channel, and you've got an automatic dam that increases the amount of power that you can get from the river. And that was also the case here. So historically, there were probably over time, you know, it's an ancient landscape here, probably over time, the river had been in a few different locations. But most recent you can see is, so this is a topographic map from the 1930s again. And on the backside of the seawall, so here's the seawall generally. And on the backside, you can see a real distinct set of topography that gives the indication of a channel that was over there against the slope. So like, you know, the case with Montgomery is similar to some of these other sites. And basically, the river channel was moved and the ledge used opportunistically to get the best dam with the least amount of effort. So then this bottom map here is from that 1930 project when what is the current Harbor Park and seawall were constructed. You can actually see the design topography lines here filling in this channel that's obvious in this figure. And then this is a photo from the 1930s, you know, again, showing kind of what that channel looked like back there. You see the real water worn ledge sticking up through there.
Was that, that was deliberately filled in with extraneous material?
It was filled in, yeah, to create that Lower Harbor Park area, yeah, behind the seawall.
Remember the days on that again? The Harbor Park?
Nineteen, early 1930s.
Was that kind of the homestead design for the whole Harbor Park?
Yes.
Yes, it was, yeah.
So that would be on the National Historic Register?
There's a, as far as we've been able to detect, the dam itself is not on the Historic Register and is just outside the Historic District. I think the Historic District does, however, include the Lower Harbor Park area.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
It's a contributing resource to the High Street. It's part of the National.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, we'll talk a little bit.
The lower part, is that historically preserved?
The Lower Harbor Park area?
Yeah.
It's on the Historic Register, yeah. Yeah, it's part of the Historic District. So anyway, like a little bit of just a few images and some of the history of the site. We'll talk about, you know, the watershed and some of the existing impacts of the dam on flooding and flood levels and things like that in the next couple of slides here. So here's your McGuntzakook River watershed. Here's McGuntzakook Lake here. So the watershed extends obviously up around the lake, about a little over 30 square miles an area. Nate discussed the obvious, real attractive resource for river herring and live production in particular in McGuntzakook Lake. And then down here at the very mouth of the watershed is the Montgomery Dam. So everything funnels on down and through Montgomery Dam. So then in the upper right here is some, some of the flood maps from FEMA, current floodplain that's mapped here through downtown Camden. And so the orange shaded polygons here are basically what FEMA back in the 1970s and early 80s mapped as the 100-year floodplain of the McGuntzakook River. And so in particular, just down upstream of Montgomery Dam in this area. And then the impoundment of Montgomery Dam then extends up to about what was the former Highland Mill, the Brewster Building. So then here's a chart, and I'm going to apologize, I'm an engineer, I use charts and stuff. So I'm going to show you a few, but I will just point out the most important things on each of them. So don't worry about, there are some details on there. I won't, don't feel like you needed to digest all of it. I'll give you all the important stuff to take a look at. But so this is a chart, it's called a profile. And so on the Y-axis, here is elevation of, above the ground. And then on the bottom axis is distance. And so here's the Montgomery Dam. The harbor is out here. And then as we move up this line, this is a ground elevation as you move up the river. So here's the Montgomery Dam, then we get up into the Brewster Building, Washington Street, and then the Knox Mill Dam you see on up the way. And then these lines are the flood profiles as you move up the river. And so you see the flood profile coming up the ledge there, and then when you get up to Montgomery Dam, it jumps up and is pretty flat all the way up to Highland Mill. And it jumped up again at Washington Street and jumped up again a whole bunch there at Knox Mill. But, so this clearly tells us that Montgomery Dam has an impact on the flood levels there through downtown Camden. Another piece of the assessment that I talked about, we sampled the sediment behind the dam. The good news, it's such a small little impoundment, it's really not possible to impound that much sediment in there. But we took measurements to calculate how much sediment is there, roughly 300 or 400 cubic yards or roughly 30 or 40 truckloads. But you kind of see when the, when the impoundment's drawn down there, there's basically a veneer of two to four feet of sediment over underlying ledge. Pretty interesting to be up and underneath there when the water's drawn down. There is one additional old feature, a tank in there that seems like it's just got water in it at this point, but. So then we, and then this map shows the depths of the sediment behind the dam. So the reds are about four feet deep, the yellows are about two feet, and the greens are about one foot. So in general, you've got between four, one and four and a half feet, but on average, about two to four feet of sediment. And then we took some samples from both sides and right next to the tank, the sediments. And then we also took some sediment samples from the harbor as well to compare to what is there in the harbor. And so those results came back, nothing screaming high, at least in the sediment that's, that's in there. You know, the sediment, historically, there's been some dredging events where the, some of the sediments from right in front of the gate and whatnot have been excavated. And I imagine the sediment scours a bit, particularly when the impoundment's drawn down, when there's big floods and things like that. But generally, it matches pretty well with what's in the harbor. So some, typically, the results showed some elevated levels of some metals and hydrocarbons. And we compare those results to some various thresholds that some of the ecological and environmental agencies establish for the potential harm that those chemicals would give to various sorts of biological and marine life and compare those thresholds. So there was, there was nothing from the sediment sampling that really screamed off the charts, pretty similar to what was found down in the harbor. Some of the indicators were slightly higher in the harbor and lower in the sediment and vice versa. So based on those results, we've had similar sites elsewhere in New England with similar results that ultimately those environmental agencies allowed that sediment to be released. However, because this is such a small amount of sediment, if, if whatever final project alternative that was selected, if that were one that would enable sediment to be eroded, because it's such a small amount of sediment, I think you would just plan to take that sediment out and dispose it elsewhere and just take that issue off the table for your planning. So, and yeah, historically, when the dredging has occurred in this little impoundment, it hasn't been an issue to dispose of the material locally. But there's a process, you know, every dam removal goes through this process. You do enough sampling to characterize, you know, the sediment. There's a lot more sediment, you do a lot more sampling. If there's not that much, you, you know, you just kind of tie it to that. And then, then there's protocols, working with DEP and other agencies to determine what the potential options are. And then ultimately, you know, if it's a community-based project, the community can just decide what they want to do with the sediment. Obviously, it's more expensive to excavate it and take it away, but like I said, for such a modest amount of sediment, if it were me, I would probably just excavate it and be done with it. And then in terms of the structures, as you know, there's a series of structures over the impoundment, starting with the businesses along Main Street, on both sides of Main Street, and then the Main Street Bridge, and then on up the way, there's the footbridge. And then you get under the Brewster Building and the Washington Street Bridge. So just a few pictures. The primary interaction of those buildings with the river and the impoundment are building supports. You see some examples and some of the conditions here. These supports are actually these supports here. But there's a variety, some timber on top of, some timber on top of precast piles, some things like this, metal on top of barrel formed, on top of likely retrofit footings and things like this. And then you get up, and this is actually the center pier of the Main Street Bridge, and this is up through the Main Street Bridge. And so we took a look at, and just in general, to establish a kind of a baseline of what all that looked like. You know, if you were commissioning a structural engineer to just take a look at your property, you know, they would, you know, conclude that, you know, some, there are some deficiencies there and things like that under the existing condition. But nothing too hor, you know, obviously, just a range of conditions.
So people understand, normally, this isn't cold water. This was drained, nothing big.
Right, yeah, yeah. Thanks for that clarification.
Not what it generally looks like.
Right, yeah, yeah. We just couldn't, we just couldn't.
Cold water gone, it's an ice.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to infer that. I just, the conditions under which we did the assessment, we had to drain the impoundment down, and that's the only way we could photograph and do things like that, so.
Actually, draining it is the only way we get to do construction and our buildings as well.
Ah, okay.
So.
Okay.
That's the point.
Yeah, with this slide, I've got some other notes later in the presentation as well. With this slide, I was just, you know, kind of showing, you know, what it was like when we did the assessment under the building, buildings. Okay, so then we'll talk about the feasibility portion of our study. And so there were three main categories of evaluation that we took a look at. The first was modifying the dam, and I'll talk about the cases that we looked at for that. The second was if the dam were modified, what does that mean for those structures? And then third is related to the fish passage, what are the options there? So we'll step through those one by one. So for the dam modifications, so we look at, looked at three cases, actually, four cases.
Can you turn your microphone so that, because this is.
Yeah, I wish, I mean, I'd like to stick it straight here. I'll hold it. So we looked at four cases, a no-action case, or maybe just you're fully reconstructing the dam. But, well, the no-action case, you just leave it alone, it'll degrade over time, continue to have the same sort of chronic problems. And that was, you know, it's a pretty quick assessment of how that stacks up against the goals and objectives, it doesn't meet them. So we didn't spend a lot of time evaluating that further. Then we looked at three additional cases, the first of which would entail fully rebuilding the spillway to its current condition. And so that would mean basically removing the spillway from the gatehouse in this L shape and reconstructing that with a new concrete spillway. And so this chart here is then a side view or a front view along the spillway, moving from north to south. At the north end here, you see what the elevation is at the gate structure, and then you come down onto the spillway, and then the area that's occluded, you know, behind the buildings over here. And then the gray part is the infilled part that makes the dam, and then the dark black line shows the actual ground elevation if you were to take the dam out. So we took a look at this case of just reconstructing the dam, and then we ran that through, you know, we took the FEMA models, but then we resurveyed the whole river and rebuilt the models in case there had been any changes since the FEMA study, and rebuilt the hydraulic models for today's conditions and not the conditions in the late 70s. But we found some very similar trends here. Here's the dam, here's the ledge going down, Main Street and the footbridge. Again, you show a real clear bump up in the flood profiles resulting from the dam. So reconstruction of the dam will buy time on the maintenance of the spillway and whatnot. You end up with pretty similar, however, requirements in terms of managing water levels and things like that. It'll result in the least change, you know, to the current case with the pool, like, you know, Tom mentioned.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So does it have to be at a certain height? What if we dropped it another foot or so?
Yeah, so we, I was talking through, we looked at three scenarios. One would be rebuilding to approximately the same height. The second would be dropping at four feet. And then the third is a removal down to the, to the native ground there. So we can come back and talk about that some more, but maybe this next scenario, next couple of scenarios will give you some additional, yeah.
I've got another question under term reconstruction. When you say reconstruction, the old dam goes away and you're putting in a new one as opposed to shouldering the existing dam with a new dam parallel to it?
So I don't think you would repair the existing spillway just with an overlay of concrete or something like that. It probably just does not have enough inherent structural value. It would just be easier to probably, it's, you know, a masonry structure that's been encased in concrete that's flaking off and things like that. It'd probably just be easier to just, I mean, that's a sort of a technicality, I guess, or a design detail if you wanted to go with that type of approach. But this, for simplicity of construction, I think you would probably just get rid of what's there and rebuild it.
Okay, just want to be clear.
Yeah.
You had mentioned a natural-looking dam would be a possibility. Would that, would that work in this case? That's more natural-looking with rock structures and. Is that what it actually meant?
You could likely reconstruct it with, you know, cuts, cut stone and masonry and things like that. I use, yeah, so in the cost estimates I include later, we'll talk through, I assume concrete because that's usually by far much less expensive, but.
I just, I'd like to go over all these great questions.
Yeah, some of these things will come up, but, yeah.
You know, let's go a little bit further. Do the elements. I'm just concerned about the cold water, that's all.
Yeah.
It's going to be a disaster.
Yeah. Okay. So that was the rebuild option. So then we looked at two additional options here for what to do with the dam. So the second option would be to lower, take the spillway out and then lower, rebuild the spillway, but at an elevation that's four feet lower. And so what that would do, that lowering at four feet would result in the spillway coming out to about here. And once you get over to here, that elevation is, would be made up with ledge over in this area. That's just how the ledge lays in there. It's kind of pitching down towards the gatehouse. And then the third option we looked at, you know, then was taking out the whole, the whole ball of wax, the gate structure and the spillway, and just reverting to the, the river channel being within the, the shape of the ledge on down through here. So that river channel. So that river channel would actually fall off in this direction, and we'll talk more about that here coming up. So again, we looked at the flood benefits of those two changes to the dam. So in the bottom right, we see what the benefits are from lowering the spillway four feet. And so that, that buys us a few feet of flood relief, particularly in the, the lower impoundment area here downstream of Main Street. So you see the existing hundred-year water surface here, partially removing it buys us a couple of feet, and then the full removal buys us, oh, about nine feet of floodwater relief right at the dam. Obviously, that then diminishes in the upstream direction. And then this chart shows more of a typical water level, say, the middle of May or something like that. And in those conditions, you would see the, the water level drop more than, than it would during a flooding condition. And then just one other thing I'll note is that with the partial removal option, then also with the dam removal option, you actually start to see some influence from the Main Street Bridge, which doesn't really show up in the flood profiles in the existing case. So if, at some future time, yeah, I know, the Main Street Bridge, I believe, is sort of on the study list for DOT, if at some future time that were replaced with a structure that had higher capacity, the net effect of the dam removal, you would see more separation of these floodwaters extending further upstream through Main Street. So we've talked about the structures here a little bit, and we, we took a look at what their existing case is, and then we tried to think pretty hard, you know, how the changing water levels with the dam modification and the dam removal would influence those structures along various factors, starting with, you know, how the level of the, you know, where the observed degradation is on the structure, structures and relative to water levels. So typically, typically, you know, the, the greatest amount of degradation you see on the supports are kind of in that typical water level, but in particular, the fluctuating water levels that you see when the dam's managed for floodwaters and things like that. And so depending on the scenario, whether it's a partial modification, or a partial lowering or removal, you know, sort of that typical elevation where the water would interact with those supports will change a bit. However, by reducing the water level, there's many supports that will actually be out of the water with the reduction in the water levels. So there could be some changes as to where that typical water levels are on the structures, but then several of the supports will be out of, out of the water.
Your picture at the bottom, how, how much lower would that, does that represent?
Yeah, so this is on that same day where the, it was drained out. This was, actually, this is a little over a year ago, I think it was early, late June, early July. I think we met, you know, so it's a typical flow for that time of year. So it's lower than it would be if you did the partial spillway lowering, but it's probably still higher than it would be, just a little bit higher than with a dam.
Like six feet down, maybe?
This guy right here is just about six feet, and the spillway is about two feet over his head. Yeah.
That's about twice, twice as low as it would be at a four-foot lower.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's probably a pretty good estimate, yeah.
Are you considering the granite part also as, there's the, there's the concrete spillway, and then there's the granite?
Yeah, so the concrete—
On the other side of the—
Uh-huh. Yeah, so with the, with the partial lowering scenario, it would just be the concrete part, so the granite part on the, on north side from the gatehouse over would stay the same. And then in the removal scenario, the granite would go to, you know, the gatehouse area would go to—
The partial, the pool would be there, correct?
In the partial—
The waterfall would be there.
In the partial, there would be a, a pool there, it would be probably smaller in footprint than the current situation, but there would be a pool there, yeah.
That also eliminate the flow that goes over the south side towards the, towards the public land?
I think it depends, you know, it, things like that, I think, you know, if everybody, like, got together and decided that they were going to go with the, you know, partial spillway removal, and on top of that, that was indicated to be a really important thing to have water over that way, you know, there's, there's design details you could do to shape things over there to allow water to go that way, you know, if there's a water feature component.
You might document that four feet.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you just have to modify the ledge to push some water that way, you know. I don't think that's something to get, you know, there's, there's a range of, of things that can be considered. So another potential component, yeah, Brian?
So, just quickly, so in any scenario, the same amount of water is flowing over whatever it is, whether it's four feet high, six feet high, because once the impoundment is full, that's all you can impound, correct?
Right, yeah, there's no, yeah, no storage at all, what comes in goes out, yeah, yeah.
So, in every, all three scenarios, it's the same amount of water that's leaving the river and going into the harbor.
Right.
It's where it might be coming out.
Right, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have to leave, but this is a question that may not come up in your report. I'm curious about whether the waterfall that, that falls towards the town landing, isn't that passable by fish who are accustomed to going up falls? I mean, that's sort of a, that's sort of a typical river-type waterfall of rocks.
Yeah, I don't, maybe, you know, maybe elvers can work their way up through that, but no swimming fish are able to get up through that, you know, are not able to get up that, yeah, no, it's a, it's a complete barrier, yeah. There's a, there's a, there's a couple of steps down at the bottom of the ledge there, if you walk up that, what's that?
Yeah, they get parked at that.
Yeah, they can get up like a, a step or two there, but then they're confounded by the—
So with complete removal, you still have a significant falling of water that would still present a barrier of some sort, is that right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk through that in a second, I'm sorry, I didn't get through, get to that before. But then the cliff notes are that, yeah, so the cliff notes are just for, for your benefit. The dam removal, in terms of the fish passage, reduces the elevation that fish have to get up from 25 feet with the dam in place down to 15 feet. And then, so then based on the length that we have to work with to, to make a channel up that 15 feet, so there's options to do that. You know, the, the channel would be going off to the, sort of the northeast, it wouldn't be going like right over the top of the bedrock there.
Essentially, constructing a fishland.
A, a channel, river, you know, basically a river channel, yeah.
More like modified ledges. Sorry, I missed your point.
No problem, yeah. So a couple of the other factors, and just on the structural front, another potential mechanism by which the structures could be impacted is if, you know, right now, the structures have water around them in the winter, would there be a risk of frost getting down underneath the footings? And some of these things, realistically, you need to, once a, a project approach is selected, you'd have to, you know, do a little bit more site assessment. I think for the most part, these footings are on ledge, and so there's unlikely to be a real risk with, with frost issues, but if there were selected ones, you'd want to, you know, dig down around them and just verify that.
Wait, so with full removal, would the pool water be there still?
Yeah, we'll talk, let's, let's, let me, let me just get through these and get into sort of the alternatives, yeah.
Because it's important, because we have, like, it's telling us underneath our building, it's, I mean, our, our buildings are designed for water.
Uh-huh. Yeah, in general, I'll just, real quick, your maximum pool is rebuilding the dam the way it is. If you lower the spillway, there will be a smaller pool footprint, and then if a dam is removed, they're very minimal pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's probably not a good option. Let's keep going.
Yeah.
Just can't see the rest of it.
Yeah. I think, I'll, I'll cut through the rest of these issues related to structures. I think the bottom line is, there's existing issues that probably could use some TLC under those buildings, and then whatever alternative is selected that would change those water levels. It's likely that there would need to be some countermeasures, but none of those instances seem like they're insurmountable. So I think it's probably a base conclusion to make on that issue.
Was it found that there was a nap, likely to be a nap damage?
But in general, you know, ha- having structural supports not in the water and, you know, ice formation is going to be greatest with the ponded, you know, situations, there would be less, you know, I don't think there's a real ice issue there to begin with right now, but in general, it's going to be beneficial to the structures to not have them in the water from a sort of a structural perspective.
But the beauty's gone. It's gone. Once we do it, it's gone.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so then we'll talk about, so we've talked about sort of the structural modifications, and we've talked about some of the flooding issues, we're going to talk about fish passage now. And I just threw this up, even though it kind of always, well, everybody who's down there knows it changes day to day, what it looks like down there, but you think of fish passage, you're like, well, we just have to get it from the water, up into the water above the dam. But in actual, actuality, there's pretty, depending on what, what part of the tide cycle you're in, there's quite a, quite a difference. So I just threw this up for reference to kind of give you a sense. So this left picture is at a relatively higher tide level, and it actually makes the task of getting, you know, on up easier, obviously, the, the water at the bottom is higher. And then you've got it in a lower tide condition over here, and that looks like a more challenging situation to get on up over through there. And then the blue line here is actually what's mapped as sort of your highest tide, highest astronomical tide that's established by the DEP and others. So I've got a couple of tables here, and I will tell you the important things about those as well. This just, I'm just going to give you a sense of, of what this says. Basically, this is just a summary of how much vertical feet we would need to make up with the fish passage between the different cases. So rebuilding the dam as it is, we have 25 feet to get up over with some sort of fish passage. And then with the partial spillway, we've still got 21 feet to get up. So these are not insignificant elevations to get up. And then with the dam removal, about 15 feet. And then when we bring that into the length then that we have to work with to basically distribute that elevation loss, we get a sense of what some of these effective gradients are. And so the, with the spillway reconstruction, you're in effective gradients, that it's really only technical fishways are feasible at that level. When you get into the dam removal and along the longest alignment, you actually get into a slope range that you can do with a river channel, natural approach.
Can you just clarify, is this, is that 25, 21, 15 P? Is that from high tide, low tide?
It's based on actually mean tide. It's based on mean tide, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then this table over here, really, I just included it to show there's a range of fish passage approaches, and Nate touched on a number of them before. But starting with your, your dam removal, or your, basically, your river channel restoration, and then moving up in another sort of nature-oriented approach are the nature-like fishways. And then on into the technical fishways, I'll show you a couple of examples of these, pool and weir and denial fishways. In general, the preference amongst, I would say, both resource agencies and also funders, you can read from higher to lower in the order that they're shown in this chart, generally.
I mean, likely sort of grant funding, do you have a—
Yeah, more prefer, more preferability, the higher they are on that list, and more likelihood of also obtaining external funding. And then also more effective for a broader range of, broader spectrum of fish as well, higher biological capacities, things like that. Yep, okay. So here's some examples. So starting with, these are some fish passage structures that have been constructed in midcoast Maine. This one is a, a nature-like fish passage structure beneath a roadway where there was a, or a replaced culvert in a relatively steep set of stream, but you see, you've got cascades and pools set up with these narrow slots in here for fish to just jam on up through, rest in the pools and make their next move. Here's another one out in Penobscot, Pierce Pond Project, sort of a similar approach. These types of approach are closer to what you would see at the dam removal and river restoration side of things on this system. So then we move forward to what are referred to as pool and weir-type fishways. So on the left here is the very notable one at Dammer Scotta Mills, a lot, high, sees a lot of attention, passage, million-ish fish, Nate, on certain years. And then the one on the right here is on, on, in Bradley, on Blackman Stream, thank you. This is a project, it's at the Leonard's Mills Logging History Museum, also an extraordinarily successful fishway. And, you know, so the commonalities you see with these are that the pools tend to be, you know, sort of more curvature, you know, some more irregularity, creates more diversity in currents, and these, with these types of fishways, the fish get up over each weir and rest, and get up over each weir and rest.
It would appear that it would attract people, too.
Uh, yeah.
It would attract people to join beauty of what's there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you, if you've ever been to Dammer Scotta Mills in, you know, the last week of May or the first week of June, it's, it's quite a hotspot, for sure. I know my kids like going there. And then lastly, so this is then a, a denial fishway, and it's much more utilitarian in nature. All of these, all of these can be constructed in, in ways to, you know, include aesthetic accents and elements and things like that. The denial is kind of, there's been a lot of them built around Maine. Nate talked through some of the, some of the pros and cons. For a technical fishway, they tend to be the least cost because they have very simple, simple geometry, and the weirs are timber, things like that. The way they work is that all the turbulence that's created through the weirs just give the fish enough so that they can just shoot right on through. So the fish will, the fish will come into this entrance channel here, and then they'll shoot right on up through to a resting pool here, rest here, and then shoot right on up through here. This particular fishway was removed last year, however, because over the years of its existence, it had fallen into disrepair, and also the dam that it was next to was leaking to the extent that there wasn't water going down the fishway anymore, and so, so at the Cooper's Mills site in North Whitefield, was dam removal last year. So, you know, kind of the conclusions on the options, comparing the options of what we do with the dam with what the options are for fish passage. So for the full spillway reconstruction option, there isn't a sort of a channel restoration or nature-like option. For the pool and weir, there is an option, but it would need to be routed over through the Harbor Park. And then there are options for the denial type. There, for the partial spillway reconstruction, again, you're buying yourself about four feet, but again, no sort of channel restoration or nature-like option there, but the technical fishways should work. And then for the dam removal option, has the broadest spectrum of options, including a, sort of a channel restoration approach. So, and again, in terms of typical effec— So, and again, in terms of typical effectiveness, highest effectiveness, some drop off or potential drop off for the fullest spectrum of fish, you know, and then Daniele's tend to work for specific fish pretty well and then other fish not very well at all.
Have you assessed this at all in context of rising ocean levels? I mean, does it make any difference if the ocean is two feet or six feet high or whatever?
Yeah. I think, you know.
Rising ocean levels, what would that would impact?
Yeah. I mean, depending on the, yeah, so the question was whether rising sea levels would, how that would affect, you know, this consideration, you know, and depending on which projection you use and how far out into the future you think about it, you know, whether it's 2040, 2050, 2070. I haven't seen any sea level rise scenarios that are, you know, for a long timeline that are much more than four or five or seven feet. So it would reduce the overall height, but I think even if you banked on future sea level rise for the reconstruction options, you're still squarely in the technical fishway realm.
But it has a lot of implications for how we decide with the, with Harbor Park and the seawall exists there and the constant maintenance that is having to happen there because seawall does get overtopped.
Right. Yeah.
Seawall what?
It gets overtopped.
Oh, overtopped.
Yeah. Okay.
Water is blocked.
Yeah.
By water.
Yeah. Okay.
Did anybody take a picture of the entire back when that water was down? I saw one building. What did the entire scope of the harbor and the buildings look like with all, with the water down? From the harbor looking out?
With the water down, from the, from the, yeah, we have a whole range of photos.
It's a real eyesore.
Yeah, there's a whole range of photos that I'd be happy to share with you. I just picked a couple of examples for today.
And so then what is the location of the next dam up? That's controlling some of the water flow down, right?
So the next dam up, so there are some weir structures underneath the Brewster Building. And then the next dam up is the Lower Knox Mill Dam. So that controls the water elevation, doesn't control the flow of water or the volume of water coming down, but it does control the water elevation from there upstream.
So right now, you're just looking at the Montgomery Dam.
We are just looking at the Montgomery Dam. That's it.
But the river system is a system, so everything along there is affected. All the dams and the lake can't take one section of it and decide to work on that and not have an effect, everything else at some point.
Well, so I guess there's two parts to that question. I think there is in general, like you wouldn't just take, you wouldn't just establish fish passage on Montgomery Dam just for itself. That would, that would be very expensive for very little benefit. So I think the whole, the whole motivation, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there are issues at the Montgomery Dam and in addition, that need to be addressed and are going to cost money. And in addition to that, there is a desire to look at the watershed as a whole. We, for this particular study, we were commissioned to just look at Montgomery Dam and its issues. But I do understand there is also interest and motivation to keep looking at the other dams on up the river. However, I would say to the other point of your question though, because of the way the hydraulics and things are set up, changes that you make at Montgomery Dam don't extend all the way up to Knox Mill. So to be honest with you, you can modify the Montgomery Dam without making any great changes.
Right. I understand that, but what would be the point of doing this for fish passage if that is the only place to get to?
Right. Yeah. So, you know, like I suggested before, you wouldn't do a fish passage project at Montgomery Dam just for that, 500 feet of river channel upstream. That just wouldn't make, wouldn't make sense.
Are there plans to look at the rest of the dams? I mean, you've got these five dams all the way through there.
There are, yeah.
If you go ahead and spend all this money on this dam, you know, you gotta look at the Norton Street Dam, the Knox Mill Dam.
Right.
And figuring all the contaminated soils behind all those other dams.
Right.
Which is part of the project. That doesn't make any sense to spend that kind of money down here with all those factors, without determining that.
Yeah.
I think this is phase one of a five-phase project.
You're totally right. Nate was saying before, he's been working outlet stream with six dams for 18 years. You know, this, you know, when you, when you think about the potential benefits of restoring the Montgomery or the McGuntzakook River watershed and reestablishing the runs here, I think Nate's initial assessment, when I talked to him on the phone, was there's a whole pile of habitat up there in McGuntzakook Lake, things like, you know, he mentioned before, you know, potentially decades on down the road, commercial fishery, things like that, in addition to all the other benefits that come out of managing the river system, not just for nature, but also for people, you know. So there's, there's this legacy of sediments, you know, potentially in these dams upstream. And, you know, so if you do a project that addresses that, you know, for future generations, that could be a net benefit for, you know, the future. But I completely agree with you. It's a, you know, the curve to get to that point is quite steep on this river because of the legacy of management of it and all those issues that absolutely need to be looked at.
There also, can you talk a little bit about the immediate flood, the immediate flood reduction, flood risk reduction benefits? So even if we were going to say we don't care one bit about the fish, how might we look at this scenario just based on a cost perspective of the millions of dollars of property that are in the flood zone currently, the cost of maintaining the dam as is, the cost of the staff time, the cost of the insurance, the cost of all of those things?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. You know, like we saw in the, you know, the hydraulic modeling results there, you know, the dam has an impact on flood levels for, for those businesses around, you know, Main Street and upstream of Main Street on up to the Brewster Building. So managing the dam, even if you didn't think one thing about fish, you know, there'd be some benefits there, obviously. And particularly, you know, depending on what your beliefs are relative to climate change, but the, you know, the trend is, is that seems like climate's changing and some of the, some of the storms are getting more intense and things like that. So there's certainly a direct benefit related to that.
Aside from the aesthetic considerations, which are upsubjected, it took many years to create what's here now, many, many years at great expense and you put all those costs for all those years, have an amount to a certain amount of money. And by the same token, it would take a while to undo what was done.
Sure.
But if you take a longer-term view, the relative cost of undoing what was done in, say, a 30-year period as opposed to the previous 150 or 120-year period is probably a lot less than what it would be on that 30-year period. Wouldn't it cost, you know, less than it would by keeping the dams the way they were?
Yeah. It's a great segue on a couple of these things I want to keep working through because I've got some graphics and then some, some things related to the costs and things, so, but yeah. All right.
Can you all try to do like a short summary of what you've been people, and then anybody else additional questions to say?
Sure. Yep. Yeah. So I'm just going to cruise through here. So I just got some graphics. These are cartoons. Don't, don't get too, you know, these are cartoons that just generally give a sense of what you might be looking at. So this, this option is the dam removal option with a restored river channel going through sort of the prior alignment of the channel that was through the Harbor Park. So I'll point out a few things, Tom, to your question. So with the dam removal option, you would end up with basically exposed ledge on either side of the river channel. During periods of higher water flow, water would back over, you know, or come up onto that ledge. But in general, you would have a river running down through there out from Main Street and on down. During, during, let me just talk, let me finish what I'm saying. During periods when flows were higher or even as part of a design element, could also end up with the ability to also be routing some flow on down the bedrock there as well where there's the cascade presently, intermittently most typically though. But so that's sort of the dam removal option. I'm going to say, let me just walk through these because I've got four more cartoons and then maybe we can take a pause and I'll get your question, okay?
I was just wondering about the Harbor Park. It's historically preserved. You could bring a lot to go over through there.
I mean, it, so, yeah, it's a great question. You know, the town people, the town obviously would have to collectively make the decision to, you know, have, have that value of restoring the river through that area versus preserving that area, you know, in its current state, which also has problems, I understand, with inundation from tides and things like that. Or if you accentuate what's there and keep building higher seawalls and things like that to keep water out of there, you know, that's up to the town to decide. From a practical or a logistic perspective, projects like this occur in national historic districts all the time. And in fact, I have one, I was, I was, I was here, I was at that project at, you know, 2:30 this afternoon in the Head Tide District on the Sheepsket. There's a dam modification project there right in the middle of the historic district. So that is in no, in terms of logistics, that is in no way a hurdle or a showstopper. But the other sort of value judgment of how to manage, you know, collectively, the community manages their resource in the town, that's kind of up for you folks to.
It would be nice to see a picture of what it looks like, you know, of waterfall missing there alive, so people can see that.
Yeah. I think there's ways, just to talk to you about that a little bit. You know, these are real conceptual.
I'm trying to make what came clear, but there's confusion of a lot of studies that have done, key word is feasibility. The key word in what you're doing here is if this was a feasibility study, can I build this two-story house, one-story house? It isn't, doesn't go to code, doesn't go to any restrictions. If, if we were going to the next step, that's where that would happen. So remember, again, this is just looking at what is possibly feasible, what options are feasible and what might they cost to be able to do so? There's no, no design element in here. So I understand where your natural tendency is to jump to the next level and say, I totally agree with you. I like visuals and I like to see a rendering of what this might look like. And that will come. That will absolutely come because I think the architectural or scenic beauty of whatever we might do, whether we leave it as is or change it, that will be coming. So, but I really, really, we're two and a half hours into this session. That's a long time. And I know I had saddle sores, that's why I got up. But I think what we'd like to do is let's just have Mike finish and let's get to those questions. And by the way, this will not be the last time we'll discuss this either. We'll have many discussions about the options going forward, but there's been a lot of work put into this feasibility study. So please, Mike, would you finish and get to, so that everybody understands the relative costs too, because I think it's next on your, on your list.
Yeah.
And then we can, and we'll entertain questions if that's okay with you all.
Yeah. Yeah. To your, you know, like Bob said, there's, there's, you narrow down the alternatives. There's many ways to create renderings or photo visualizations to help people get a sense of what things might look like. So here's another option. This is also a dam removal, but with a Pool and Weir type fishway, also on that similar alignment. Here's another option, which is a partial spillway reconstruction with a Pool and Weir. So you see the, the length of the spillway that's reconstructed with a Pool and Weir fishway snaking on down through the ledge. Here's a partial spillway reconstruction cartoon, in this case with the Pool and Weir fishway routed through the park. The advantageous, advantage going this way versus the other way is a longer length and so flatter slope and generally greater success with fish passage. And then lastly, here's the full rebuild option showing one possible alignment for a Daniele fishway aligned with the current seawall there. With the full rebuild option, there is also some potential to do a Pool and Weir fishway through the Harbor Park, but you would end up with some major modifications to the gate Okay. So I'm not going to ask you to read any of this. I'm just, the reason I'm showing you this is like, this is the reason why we don't have renderings. You know, we, we looked at all the combinations of the dam options, the rebuild, the partial spillway and the removal with the feasible fish passage options. So, you know, we, we end up with 10 or 12 different options that we then took a look at relative to their performance for fish passage, but then also other design objectives, goals and objectives like, sorry, you know, some of the issues with structural, how would that change? What would it do with Harbor Park? And then at the end here is a total cost column as well. So that's in the report. If you want to see how those combinations of things shake out relative to those various goals and objectives, that's found in the report. And any questions that came on that, by any means, we'd be happy to talk through. So in terms of costs, so again, these are planning level costs, order of magnitude, and they're really just for kind of comparing different options to each other. And then, so you'll see I've got it broken out in a couple of different ways. One column is related to just the initial construction cost. A second column is related to the lifespan cost. So that's, you know, your, your incremental cost year to year, your staff time for 50 years, you know, your periodic repairs every 10 years, things like that. And when you, and when you add that up into future dollars, those, those really add up quite a bit. And then a total cost column. For contrast, also included the cost of just rebuilding the spillway without establishing fish passage, although it has a relatively modest initial cost. You've got all those lifespan costs and so over time, it really adds up. You know, there, there is some separation in here, but in general, the initial construction costs are not that dissimilar between the various alternatives. The Pool and Weir fishways tend to be more expensive because they have irregular shapes and the formwork for the concrete is more complex. The dam removal is typically the least expensive, but then you see some real separation, however, in the lifespan costs. The, the full, full dam reconstruction with a fishway, the lifespan costs are going to be your greatest because you're basically fighting gravity, the greatest and the like, greatest likely maintenance requirements and things like that, so.
Can you elaborate on grant funding possibilities?
Yeah. Yeah. I've got that rolled up in sort of a conclusion here in a second. But in general, sort of the greatest amount of funding is available for, you know, dam removal types of projects and the least amount of funding is available for dam reconstruction projects.
I was just reading, the lifespan, is it 50 or 30?
50. Yeah. It's a typical design life for a concrete structure. Yep. Yeah. So just some conclusions to wrap things up and appreciate your patience. And I bet it's been, it's been fun to talk back and forth and about the questions and things. So just some conclusions. So one end of the spectrum, the dam removal options are going to tend to give you the greatest flood relief benefit, the greatest environmental benefits, not only at the site, but then as a keystone for the rest of the watershed. The lowest long-term costs, in particular, when you factor in those lifespan costs, highest likelihood of external funding. And then under those buildings, there is a possibility that you would need to add some structural countermeasures. At the other end of the spectrum, the full reconstruction option with fish passage, it's kind of the least change to the existing condition, although you're going to have a fish ladder in there somewhere. The exact location of that would be a detail for a different discussion, but the least sort of change to the site, however, the highest long-term costs, no relief from the flooding patterns and sort of an accentuation of flooding patterns into the future with more intense storms. By far, the most challenging fish passage solution to come up with, least likelihood of external funding and. of external funding and likely you also have some structural upgrades to make underneath those buildings. And then in the middle falls the, you know, sort of the partial reconstruction. So those conclusions kind of characterize kind of the two ends of considerations. And then lastly, I think all of these options, you know, given the setting, you're going to build in those components to, you know, acknowledge the historical, you know, andesthetics and things like that, so. So yeah, thanks for your patience, that's, that's it. So if you want to talk some more questions and answers, happy to stay around for a while.
Just as I think Allison already mentioned, this is on the website. This report is a lot of information in here. It is, again, a feasibility study, looking at what options we have that are within the range of reality. They all have pros and cons, some financials, some practical. There'll be many more discussions. At the end of the day, obviously, you know, this is a town decision. This is not, you know, my decision or anybody on the select board or town, the town staff. It's just a town decision, but we have some heady things to contemplate here between, and to, to the point that I think is very important, is how far ahead are we thinking? You know, I agree, you know, man has caused all kinds of issues unintentionally 200 years ago, but now we're, we realize how big they are. And this area, by the way, you read about it, is one of the biggest areas in the country today for the restoration of, of waterways as they were. And Massachusetts huge, Maine also, I'm not deriding Maine, but it, it is a big, big issue and we need to take it seriously for what we do today. If we don't start on a path, any path, whatever path we decide, we'll never get there. So that's where we're at. The next, the next step for the town will be to look at what will be the next step, which will be the potential design or designs of, of options, which will incorporate renderings and, and things that are more visual to us, so we don't have to read charts and graphs as we engineers like to do. That's going to be the next step for the town to consider. And we'll be discussing this a lot more, but we just wanted to introduce this through the video, through this workshop for the town to, and thank you all for coming. It was a very great showing of people here tonight. I'm very impressed that we're also interested in this very important decision for town. Certainly, if you have questions, mic's here.
I mean, if you, I had a chance to look at the study very thorough, a very, very good report, and it was, it was actually very professional, a lot of good information.
Yes.
And my idea, before we go any further, has anyone done just a thumbnail calculation on the total, all the way to, just so that we have an order of magnitude?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we've got a potential million-dollar project right here on Monday. What is the total cost that we're looking at for the whole project, not just one portion?
Mike, do you want to address that? Do you want me to?
Yes, and what we also have done is a... And I actually think Audra might be the best to summarize this because we, what we have done also is, is an analysis of the cost coming up for the dams, is the four town-owned dams, what is expected if we do nothing at all with fish passage? And what we're looking at there is like $700,000 to $1 million over the next 10 years, depending on what things come up. This is known issue.
I'd say it's closer to the next five years.
Okay, I got your microphone back there.
Sorry, yeah. I'd say that we're looking at about a million-dollar investment in the, the dam system, and that's without discussing, you know, modification or fish, fish passage, that's just status quo repairs. We're looking about close to $1 million and, you know, we'd hope that that would be over a 10-year period, but like we saw with the Seabright Dam recently and the West Dam, you know, this coming year, you know, these, these dams can get to a state where we have to make emergency repairs much quicker than when we're planning and budgeting for. So, I mean, I would say over the next five years, about a million-dollar investment is more.
And that's taxpayer money. That's the kind of stuff that, there is no organization out there, the federal government, state government, nature conservancy organizations like that, they're not going to help us to maintain our dam system as it is. If we can, as we update and repair what we have and decide what we need or don't need, if we can find ways to create an environmental benefit and to increase our resiliency and decrease our vulnerability to climate change, there's a whole world of grant funding out there. So I think this is us trying to say, okay, if we do this a little bit better according to the recommendations of the Maine Department of Marine Resources and the Nature Conservancy and places like that, then we might get a whole lot of help with it, with the costs of that, so that's just...
Yeah, if you, we're going to sacrifice loss of local control. What do you mean by that, Mark? Well, I mean, my experience is if you accept these grants, there's all sorts of conditions with it going forward. It's not quite a check.
I'd say when we lost the, the most amount of control was Seabright Hydro. We had all, when that was a hydroelectric dam, we had all kinds of federal regulations we had to adhere to. And I think decommissioning that dam as a FERC dam was one of the best things we did to regain control of how that dam is managed. And, you know, they're not going to force grants upon us. We're the ones writing the grant applications and that's got to be based upon what our goals are as a community. So I don't, I don't think that's a good way to characterize grant-funded projects because ultimately, we're in control of what we submit and the money that we accept.
Yeah, good point. And I think to you, that's an excellent question, but we absolutely have, and Audra and staff, and I've been looking very hard at the total dollars and also, you know, the source of dollars, because believe me, this administration, this town is very careful about looking, watching tax creep. We've been trying to do a, a capital planning campaign that we don't get hit with a big bumps in, in taxes. We understand that part, but fundamentally here, there's a decision the town has to make about where it's going forward. We, we can work through the money part. That's always workable. I'm confident with that. I think it's just really about, do we want to head down a path to the future like other states are doing today? There are billions of dollars available for this kind of thing across the country, packed across the world, and other countries are doing the same thing. This is really a fundamental decision about the town going forward and taking the first step towards where we think we're going to go in 30 years or 40 or 50 years. Now, the question is before we convene this great workshop...
I have one last question, and it kind of speaks to the aesthetic value opposed to the, you know, the public vote, I mean. Isn't it true, well, I'm just speculating, okay, I'm speculating that when the spillway and the water level were reduced, if the dam were removed, wouldn't that just expose the ledge, the rock underneath rather than it being just a pool of silt, the unattractive silt that people are concerned with?
Yeah, well, I think with a...
It would sink down now because of the silt, but that would be, it would just be ledge. Right, right, and so it would just be rock. It wouldn't be water, it wouldn't be a bunch of mud like it is once. And I think that might have been a point that wasn't gotten across.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is a good point, yeah. Yeah, but basically, we talked about, you know, like the, likely the sediment would be excavated and then you'd probably wash that ledge down and, yeah, it would just be raw ledge.
I think it's an excellent question because would you really be seeing, it would be a rock, hard rock waterfall, water meandering kind of an element, that's what you'd be seeing? Yeah, you wouldn't be, the silt is, that's the advantage of doing something, get that silt out of there and, and make it more natural. Any other questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for having me.